Order at 7 o'clock. Stand for pledge.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There any changes or additions to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You guys don't have to talk so slow anymore either because now when I was trying to write the minutes, it wasn't at the same time, I couldn't, but.
I see you got your chair, so.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you.
Content agenda?
Attached are the minutes from our last meeting, October 11th, and then you have the three-year comparison for the golf course, the cash balance report as of last Friday, and then the receivables and payables for tonight.
When's the next golf course meeting?
It was last week. Oh, the next one's December 8th. December 8th at 5:30.
Yeah. Do you have anything, Andrea, to point out or?
Um, just going through, I don't think so. Just the second half of the Land Lawn Care City Hall during stuff. We did take possession of the new Public Works Ford pickup, so that is in the payables. You can see that in there, which was all quoted to the sewer fund. Otherwise, everything else is in routine. Is there any questions?
I'd move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining because there's a payable to me in there. I'm abstaining because there's a payable to me. Oh, in there.
Public forum? Anybody here to speak to a public forum? Public forum? Public forum, all right. News and communications?
Attached is the third quarter police department report that Chief Olman put together for the council. You know, he does this quarterly. So on the screen, there's a list of the types of calls that we received during the third 556 calls for service, which resulted in 34 arrests for various offenses.
Need a motion to accept this or is this for information?
Council reports?
Whispering Creek is, as all nursing homes are, looking for staff. They can't. They're trying to reserve their census for local people. They're getting all kinds of people calling from all over the state to have people come in, but they can't accept them because they want to keep. They don't have enough staff to where they're at now, and if one leaves, they have some local people that they want to get in there. So they want to keep it as local as they can. That's, they are unprofitable this last month, so.
How many beds are available if they had the staff?
Well, 17.
It's in their way under staff.
Yeah.
There was an article in the Free Press, was it Saturday or Sunday, that talked about the staff shortages throughout nursing homes in the Southern South. Or in the Southern, in general, I should say.
Yeah.
Is the preference to keep it local hindering the ability to get more staff than possibly bringing out?
No, the local is what they're saying, no, for the census, people staying there.
To keep the residents.
Keep the residents.
For local residents.
Best we can. Not the.
Okay, I misunderstood. I was like.
Want to take care of the local residents first before they open up to everybody statewide. Almost every hospital is looking for a, get somebody out into a nursing home right now. That's all I got for nursing home.
We had a golf, we had a golf board meeting on October 20th. Scott told us that we were up $56,000 through September. There's still $9,600 to come in from memberships, and that's including the $56,000 up, including the $30,000 that they put towards the deck. The cart lease is coming off next year, so that will free up some funds there. As far as goals, the no levy, we got that done, where we're not levying any money towards them anymore. John Deere lease expires in February of 2020, 2022. New lease will take place to keep the equipment, you know, keep it updated. Long-term plans, possibly a workhorse for Jacob for doing all the seeding and spraying. They're going to maybe look at some future clubhouse improvements, siding, roof, coolers, HVAC system, and a lot of the updates in the bathrooms have already been done. A lot of that was with the COVID money. Our next meeting will be October, or December 8th at 5:30. Go over the final budget.
Want to take over EDA?
We can, I can. We had an EDA meeting last Thursday, I think it was.
Yep.
Um, I didn't take notes, and that was really boring me.
There's more discussion on than anything.
Yeah, there wasn't actually a lot on the agenda. We have, a lot of it was discussing our budget and what we have available yet and what we're going to be paying out into our, like, the new home resident packages and how much we are going out in our Main Street grants, but that's all potential stuff. With some, a little discussion on possibly trying to do something different or a little bit better business event than we've had. Little, a small touch of discussion on a incubator business, but that's all stuff that's out there a little ways.
Yep.
Did I miss anything?
Um, community center board is going to be hopefully put together and have their first meeting, I think.
Before the end of the year, he was hoping to?
Yep.
Ben Sabala, kind of heading that up. I'm sure I didn't say it right, but I think you did. Jimmy?
Park Road had the meeting last Thursday. Things are going well down there. They've got Ramal Concrete coming in to redo the cement in the back that they had some tuck pointing and some brick coming off. They're working on the personnel policy. Dennis and Sarah are going to put that together at some point. Everything's going well. They invited us, anyone from the council, to the Halloween party, the 29th, at 5:30. And they were pretty fired up about it. Other than that, everything's going good down there.
Administrative reports?
Okay, in your packet, you have, let me get to it. You have the September reconciliation, the bank statement from the bank, the cash balance report, talked about earlier. New park board members that few are here tonight. Kaiya Taffs, the letter that we had sent to each of the members inviting them to come tonight. If you'd like to visit with them, you know, for a few minutes, we could do that right now if you'd like. I would suggest that we have our first meeting next month. We meet the fourth Monday of the month prior to the city council meeting. That way, if the park board does have some material or information to bring forward to the council, you know, they don't have to wait a week or two, they can do it that same night, if that makes sense.
So you're doing them at like 5:30 or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, kind of like utility board.
Yep.
So, yeah, a couple are here.
Thank you for showing interest in getting on the board.
Um, yes, thank you. I guess a couple things. I don't know if you guys, I'm sure, have your own plans of what you'd like to look forward to, but I know that pass down here place was discussed, something to possibly look into. There is some money possibly budgeted next year for a park down in that neighborhood. Something else you could start looking into. There's been a lot of interest in Janesville for a dog park. Something else you could start looking into. You guys can just, sky's the limit, do it, start looking into things. You have any questions for us?
I don't think so, I don't anyway. We'll see where it goes, what we need, and we can discuss different things that are of interest and what can come up and go with it.
Good.
Exciting.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, anything else from the council members or?
Looking forward to it. Should be a nice adventure.
I bet.
And again, thanks for stepping up and volunteering.
And I completely realize in my administrative report, the very next paragraph doesn't have anything to do with the park boards, but the contractor, the cemetery maintenance is up, so we'll have an ad in the paper here in a week or two, looking for RFPs for the cemetery maintenance. But that has nothing to do with the park board, that's a whole different thing. And then the only other thing I guess I do have, we've mentioned this a few times here over the past month or two, but we still do have an opening on the planning commission, so if anybody can think of a name, a person who would like to get on the planning commission, that would be great. So just let either Marley or myself or Andrea know, we'll work on that. That's all I have for administrative reports.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Under old business, we have a petition was submitted to Clinton and I on the safe routes thing. You're the spokesperson tonight? Wonderful, welcome.
They seem to be tougher in the bur.
That's okay.
It's like football and all kinds of things.
And just for formality here, if the city council, if you can make a motion, you know, recognizing that you will have a petition that you're going to put in the public record, that way we can have the minutes that the petition was brought forth.
Okay.
And then we can go through there, okay?
Okay.
I would move that we recognize the petition and open discussion for, with the residents.
I'll second.
All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
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 I'm Rayanne Eldred, 515 Allen Circle. Last time I was here, I just had some questions because we had just heard a little bit was going on in our backyard, and we just wanted to kind of know what was happening. And then I think at the end, we kind of concluded saying, if you could bring some solutions, that would be better than coming up with just a problem, and I absolutely agree. I would have my students do this, just as anybody else should as well. I just, I didn't know if there had been any changes or thoughts on the past, over the past month, I think that I was here about a month ago, if there was a survey sent out to these people who are directly affected, again, in the last month since the last time I was here. Last we heard, the school amount was not approved. Just how does the city plan to fund the rest, or is my information wrong?
Since then, the school amount, we have settled between the city council and the school.
Yeah, discussed the sharing between the city and the city on the cost.
Okay.
There wasn't any denying or anything, it was just we.
Okay.
And we just hadn't got together with the school board yet to discuss it, but that has been done now.
Okay, thank you. So if you go back there, the ditch is crested every year. It's been in our yard, continuing up towards our yard. I remember there was about four or five years ago, there was quite a big flood in Wasika in this area, and it came within feet of our houses. So when you think of that area, you've got to think of the impervious surfaces too, so if it doesn't have anywhere to go, that potentially could push more water towards our houses. So we were thinking about, what would happen if it did flood? Will there be lighting back there? Who's going to take care of it? Who's going to plow? I know we had said the city would. However, we haven't mowed back there, just that area, for over a month, and it hasn't been taken care of yet. So what happens if there is damage with flooding? That's a big concern for us back there. Will there be a person back there every day that it snows early enough for these kids to actually walk back there? That's a concern if there's ice back there. I don't want kids slipping. Is that going to happen on our property? Like, is it then our fault if they slip and get hurt on our property? That's a big concern for me, and I don't want kids slipping back there. I really do want to think about the safety of our kids. They do need to get to school and in a safe manner. So also thinking about the safety of our own kids as well as our privacy back there. It's pretty close. Have you stepped foot back there in the lots? We have big houses.
I did go back there, yes.
You did. So they're pretty big houses on fairly small lots. And yes, like I said last time, we bought the house knowing that was our property. It just really eliminates a lot of the area for our kids to play. So as a neighborhood, we kind of came up with three potential solutions, and I have a little bit of information. If you look at the one with the green, very similar, it would just move that path from our side of the yard to the other side of the yard and looking, the city actually owns that area, and a decent chunk of that farmland, I think you lease out, I believe.
Yes.
And potentially, there could be houses over there, potentially. I don't know. However, if you move that to that side, if you ever did build houses over there, and I think Janesville is growing, they're doing an awesome job with that, so that would not only link up three different neighborhoods instead of just the two, and ours already wouldn't go on the path if they just walked straight to school. So if you did build back there, you wouldn't have to revisit this again. But that also links up another neighborhood. If you look kind of on the left-hand side, it kind of comes off, and I know somebody owns some of that property over there with, like, part of the path, if you look up here. So that would use the, or that would utilize a path already there, and you're already helping Teal Streets. I think that was part of the situation or part of the money already. So that would link them up there. The only problem that we kind of still talked about, linking that back neighborhood on the backside of Allen Circle, they are crossing in a pretty fast area. I don't know what you have planned for that area, stoplights or somebody to be up there. I mean, we haven't quite got to that part yet. And then just the impervious area of, you know, building a path, a solid path on the other side of the runoff. If you look at the next one, would be red. You're already doing Teal Streets, so we didn't worry about that. This again is staying on the other side of the runoff, again, linking a third possible neighborhood at some point. It gets both neighborhoods connected as well as it does go on school property, so it doesn't go on other people's, I don't know. I mean, that is one of the thoughts we said. You would eliminate bridges too over this runoff. I don't know if that was part of it because you, it would have to cross a few times if you kept it on our side of the property. Like I said, I know it's also city land.
I am not 100% sure there's room between the ditch and the baseball field fence there.
I did check that.
It's pretty tight.
Pretty tight. It is.
I did look at that.
I have to agree. So, I mean, that would be something that would potentially be looked into as well.
Yes.
I tried to look at cost of all this. I mean, at least like saving you more money because the amount of money you would put into bridges as well, that would be kind of a decent amount of your money. But just trying to make sure that we're connecting the most neighborhoods as possible, making sure that potential kids are getting to school, and then you wouldn't have to revisit something again. I think that in the end will save you more money.
I have a question for you.
Yep.
You're talking here, crossing on the east side of this ditch, right?
Yes.
Because there's quite a drainage dish that runs in.
There would be the one bridge. Right now, you'd have a couple bridges if you were to do the plan that was already made.
Going on the other side of the creek will create a different bridge at a different location.
Right.
So right now, isn't there a, is there a runoff right here? So you'd have to cross there, correct? Up here?
Yeah, there'd be a bridge, one of those two red dots.
Right. So then you come on our side, you have to cross another creek over here, so you have to create another bridge. Because this is water or runoff right there.
Well, right now, the way it's set is it would be on the north side of that, the way it's currently set. We would only have to put a culvert in by the road currently.
Right, yes. You'd cross at that faster area path, like I said.
Yes.
And then you'd have a bridge there, then you'd come on west side.
It'd be the west side of the ditch and then the north side where it turns along the baseball field there.
Okay, so you, yeah.
That's the current proposed route, doesn't it?
Right, right. So I was just looking, instead of crossing a couple times, you'd end up only crossing up here, I believe. This would all stay on kind of that outside. If you looked at the blue, and I, I mean, I don't necessarily enjoy this one the most, but later on, I mean, this would end up being the cheapest. You'd connect this neighborhood up here, they just have to walk in the neighborhood and then down through the path. Again, you're already revamping Teal Street, which we appreciate a lot, but in, if you wanted to later on, you could link up the three neighborhoods, but right now, I mean, that leaves that neighborhood out, and I think that one, you could even build a path on the backside as well, so this neighborhood, because that's the one that doesn't really have a path, and I know buses are at that upper one in the upper right-hand corner. So we just thought there were some different solutions. I mean, if you could just kind of look it over. We just don't have a lot of backyard, and we would really appreciate privacy. That was one of the biggest reasons we moved to Janesville, is keeping that privacy. We love the small-town feel, and we love to appreciate, or we really appreciate the communication that we've had in the past about things that you sent to us about either road signs or anything else.
Okay.
What I'm a firm believer in, just because you can doesn't mean you should. Yes, we can cut through the yards, things like that, but doesn't mean we should do it. Now, we have a whole group of people that have just proposed three different solutions, which more than anyone on the council has come up with.
What do we cut yards that, that, which is all public?
Cutting down the backyard, and you know exactly what I mean. And so what I'm trying to get at is, we have three different solutions, and I just think it would be really foolish upfront if we did not consider any part of any of these.
I'd be willing to even have conversation to help as well.
I think at this point, and Clinton and I discussed this last week, we should let Boltman-Mink, Femright take a look at, and give us a couple of different options. You know, I can't promise anything. Some of it's, some of it's easy to do, some of it's maybe not so easy, but that's really more on the engineers, but I think we should at least let him try.
We maybe get her or a couple of them a seat at the table when he's there, so they can ask those questions or discuss.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think ultimately, it should let him sit down first and.
See what's feasible.
See what's feasible, see what some cost things are, and then get together with some people and try to come up with something to please everyone.
Do we, are we jeopardizing the federal funding by changing, is my only question.
We asked Femright that and not necessarily yet.
The timing is getting very tight.
It's getting down there to where we need to get, we need to make decisions, but.
We're already submitting things to different state agencies, we're doing plans and stuff, so we have to.
We're not completely out of time, but it's getting down there.
Well, thankfully, we have a really dedicated area here who is working really diligently to help us figure something out in the deadline.
That's maybe beyond my ability.
It is beyond your ability, but, you know, I'm really grateful. When I saw this, I like was blown away. There's a lot of work that you guys have put into this. It's awesome, and so I'm thrilled, and I really hope that we can do something about it. And I'm really glad that Jason Femright is going to look at this and.
Well, I think we probably need a motion for that, basically, at this point. I would move to let Jason Femright and Boltman-Mink take a look at this and see if there's alternative options and get back to us.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. American Rescue Plan, HVAC at City Hall.
Okay, we have two bids that we received, one from Swickers, the other from Cleaner Air Solutions to fix our air quality problems in our HVAC system here at City Hall. One, Brian is here tonight, Cleaner Air Solutions is here tonight. In my memo, to make this really short and sweet, I'm going to tell you that Cleaner Air Solutions proposal is $54,100, and I'm not an expert in reading this stuff, but I think this proposal is a little better than the other alternative proposal, which I believe is replacing our existing stuff with all newer, more efficient items, but it's $21,000 more.
Correct.
I think it's a no-brainer with the cost and keeping it local. I don't see why there should even be a discussion on that.
I assume you're confident, Brian, what you've got going here is going to make the difference that they're looking for down here? I think this is a pretty simple decision then.
You have any questions for Brian?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Brian.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brian.
How quick can you get it done, Brian?
Get started. New business, the master fee schedule.
Okay, on the screen here is our resolution. Once or twice a year, we, at least once a year, we update our master fee schedule, which is basically all of the fees that we charge for, for the city. There are a few items on the, on the fee schedule that we are basically updating from some changes we made during the last few months. The overlay vacancy fees that we have, that new overlay district is one. The recycling went up several months ago on the monthly bill, we're just updating it now on the, on your fee schedule. There's a couple other smaller items, so the resolution will approve the fee schedule.
I didn't see a fee for non-emergency civil standbys. Have we talked about adding to that?
I look back to big year, headlights, angle.
What was that, Mike? I don't.
For non-emergency civil standbys, when somebody calls and they're moving out or something, they want the police department there for three hours to watch. We can and I believe should charge for that. You know, it's emergency stuff where you have to go get your stuff and get out is different than watching the moving process.
Do we have any other type of pricing on law enforcement?
Well, hold on. When you do a non-emergency civil standby, what would the reason for that be? Why would I call for that?
It happens quite a bit.
Is it because like I potentially didn't feel safe in that moment? I needed someone there or?
Normally, there's a, there's some court paperwork that says that they can't be in the same place, same time.
So then who would the fee fall on in that?
Those requesting it, I assume.
I feel like that's a slippery slope personally, but that's my opinion.
You're saying we shouldn't charge them?
No.
I tend to agree with you. If it's a safety factor and the individual feels threatened or feels unsafe, I think it's part of our obligation and responsibility to be there for protection.
Right.
If that's the case, the situation, if it's simply because they don't like their neighbors, that's different, but no, I agree with Melissa. I don't think we should charge them for that.
Right.
But that's, we're only two of five, so.
Yeah. I guess I haven't been addressed on it, have you, about that fee, so I guess maybe we can ask Dave on that?
And as to my understanding, this fee schedule gets updated fairly regularly, so...
I see you're on it.
Yep.
So I see the vacancy, the vacancy took our suggestion and made it quite substantial.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we okay with that as a, as a, as a council? I wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of the, of the numbers that that has in there. That's close to the debt, to the, to the estimations that we put out at our meeting.
Yep.
In yellow on the screen here, Jim has talked about the new overlay district that the planning commission of the city council approved. Um, you need to, in that district, you need to register, you need vacant property or buildings. The annual fee to register is six hundred dollars, if you fail to register, you're charged a hundred bucks a month. That's kind of the incentive to register.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong, that increases?
Well, we're at this right now, just for a hundred a month.
Okay.
You were talking about here or two, if it...
Right, yeah.
We need to, we're at this right now.
But that was subs- substantially lower prior to this year. And we, we wanted to make it so that they're aware that we, we don't appreciate vacant building.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to make sure, that the whole council was aware of that change. Other than that, I think, uh, I think it's all...
Make a motion to approve the...
So I didn't see, we never came up with anything for the sidewalks removal yet?
Or...
For the...
Winter, no removal. I didn't see anything on here either.
Exactly. Is there not a base fee for that, that'll get passed on from the contractor?
That would be more of a...
It's gonna be discussed when they're gonna be reviewing the removal policy.
Perfect, I just... Will we have that on the next agenda, the snow removal policy, two weeks from now?
Yeah, we're hoping to get it done before the first of the year.
That's probably, we should probably try to get it on there.
Talking about in the middle of winters.
Motion's been made.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. South Central Drug Task Force Agreement.
Yeah, for quite a few years, the city of Janesville and many jurisdictions in our area have been part of the South Central Drug Task Force. Um, it is basically a task force that's out there, it's funded by, by some grant funding, federal money, things like that. And in order for that grant funding to continue, they need to basically a joint powers agreement between all of the thirteen different jurisdictions. So tonight's agreement is basically resigning the agreement that we signed, signed in two thousand seventeen, and the only thing that changed were the dates. Everything is the exact word for word.
And you're comfortable with it?
Absolutely, yep.
The same thing we've had?
Same thing we've had in quite a few years, yes.
How often do we renew this?
Um, well, this was in two thousand seventeen.
Four years.
Okay, sounds like I haven't seen it before.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
So if we just have a simple motion, and then Mayor Andy and I can sign it, and I'll...
Make a motion to move forward with the South Central Drug Task Force. Joint Powers Agreement.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public nuisance special assessments.
Um, this year, we had seven different situations where staff needed to go and take care of public nuisances, because after sending letters to property owners, they're not being done. Um, in Minnesota and several states, you have the right then to charge for that if they are not paid. So tonight's resolution, which we need to file to the county attorney's office before the end of October every year, approves those seven properties and the charges, and then it will go on to the property taxes beginning next year. I'm not gonna put the addresses on the screen.
And so these were delinquent, they were charged and never paid?
Correct, they did not pay.
And they were built?
And they were built, yep.
I would move that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Disc golf donation.
Last item this season, uh, American Legion Pulse Three-Eleven in the Legion has donated fifteen hundred dollars to the disc golf fund. So like all donations, we need council resolution to accept it, and then we'll, I actually already put it in the fund.
I'll make a motion to accept this donation, condition that it goes to the golf, disc golf, disc golf fund.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Second, I'm sorry.
I seconded.
Just FYI, the disc golf course is running pretty smoothly, they've got a lot of play going on.
Yeah, they do.
They don't have to sign it up, but, uh, hopefully, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, I...
They're planning on it yet this year?
Mr. Mayor.